We're gonna call the meeting to order. Start of the moment in silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Mister Glassquez, if you will call the roll.
Arthur Hamilton?
Present.
Kimberly Jackson? Ryan Bolton? Davis Reeder? Marty Davis?
Present.
Renee James?
Here.
Michelle Bruce?
Here.
Andrew Knutti?
Fred Exley?
Here. Thank you. I suppose in the absence of our two regular members, Mister Hamilton will be ready voting in the event that there is a motion. Moving on additions and deletions.
Deputy Jeff Gagnon, Planning and planning administrator. There are no additions or deletions, so if there is minor correction to the meeting minutes, Miss David point, Miss David. Need to start over, I think. Miss Davis pointed out on the top of page four that incorrectly nominated her vice chairperson and should have read Knutti. He said that's the only correction.
Thank you kindly. With those corrections made.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes as with the correction.
Okay, um, if you can just hold on for one second, because we got, I guess I kinda jumped the gun. Disclosure by members, I don't see that there's anything that we have to vote on, but just for the sake of protocol, is there any disclosure or any comments or anything related to something on the agenda that members wishes to discuss? Related to, uh, that could potentially be something of concern hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I heard the motion by Mister Hamilton, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mister Hamilton and second by Mrs. Davis to adopt the agenda.
And the minutes?
I guess they're separate, the minutes are separate, so this is just to adopt the agenda that we're gonna hear tonight and seeing no opposition, we'll show those minutes adopted. Hamilton and Davis. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with the adjustments, with the, excuse me, with the corrections noted on page four?
I'll make a motion.
The motion is made by Vice Chair, I'm sorry, by Miss Davis. Is there a second to adopt the minutes from July twenty-fourth? Move and second by Miss James. Is there any opposition, seeing none, show those minutes adopted. Davis, James. We're ready for the presentation.
Good afternoon, tonight Mister Scott Evans, the director of planning and development for CRA has joined us, he's gonna give a brief presentation on ongoing events in the CRA specifically in the arena and also an event on Singer Island coming up next week. Thank you, good evening, thank you for having me. I have brought a few slides that show all of the different activities that CRA is currently engaged in and I'd like to start with an overview of what's going on that we're in the district. We're very excited to be under construction and the construction team led by the White Company is now on site and they are currently doing demolition. And we are already starting to plan phase two and I'll start to talk about some of the future, highlight what's going on, what's under construction and then I'll talk to you about what's, some of the future elements that new events will be coming to this board for review will be in the future. And then I'll touch on some of the other projects that CRA is trying to move forward on the site. Construction's begun, this is the site, as of when, about one month before we started construction, so each month we're gonna take aerial photographs to track the progress. We're also gonna have a webcam that tracks the various progress of the building so that at the end we can show the timeframe pictures where you can see little ants moving around on the ground and the building going up, so it should be a. And we're also gonna feature those weekly pictures on our website so people can go on our website and watch the progress of construction at the site. This is a look at what it's going to look like when it's complete, this is the phase one rendering, this includes the new event center, Bicentennial Park and a new public promenade, public plazas, interactive play fountain, fountain in the main plaza area. And then the development sites which we're negotiating with Viking now to try and bring future restaurants, bring back the tiki and in the future do a new permanent marine operations and parking garage. This is the site plan, path was approved by planning and zoning board and by the city council and the CRA board. This just shows the phase one elements, which is again the event center, Bicentennial Park, the new revised beach, marine operations will be located down at the south end. And then it also just lists some of the future phases which I'll talk about later. The event center, I know this picture's hard to, to, to understand, because the text isn't very big, but it'll help remind me to describe what's, what's gonna be in it, this is the ground floor. When you walk in on the ground floor, you, the center is a rotunda with a big circular staircase that goes up to the second floor. And this, this main hallway is actually open on both ends, so you'll be able to look all the way through the facility. Now, we'll feature, this will be rentable to up to five different events at one time and we have the, the large ballroom, which is forty-five hundred square feet. And we'll be able to fit between three hundred and twenty and three hundred and fifty people in that for various events. And then we have this two. Sure, yes. Bicentennial Park would be located over here, this is the intercoastal waterway and then the extension of Thirteenth Street driving in would be right along this border, so this is the main entrance here. We're gonna have two community rooms here, this can be, this is about two thousand square feet, you can rent the entire facility or you could split it up and just have a smaller meeting room for like a birthday party or a classroom. And then this is a restaurant and a cafe space, the cafe would be like cold sandwiches, drinks, coffee and then the restaurant would actually have a second story bar and the main food service would be on the ground floor. And then it will also have outdoor patio space here.
If, is it appropriate that I ask questions now while we're?
Absolutely.
Okay. Back one if. Okay, so I guess, number one, the Marina Event Center is, I guess, just a little, little bit north per se, as compared to where the current Newcombe Hall would be, right?
Exactly, yeah.
So it's gonna have, I guess, a bit of a shift, it's not gonna be at the same location per se.
Yes, where the parking lot is for existing Newcombe Hall is where the new, the new event center will go.
Okay, um, you said that there, there was enough space to accommodate five, I guess, events at the same time?
Yes.
So I guess five didn't, different meeting areas?
Right, right.
Now, I'm sure you guys have done this, but the total square foot of the, I guess, the meeting areas and the parking, I guess, what's the parking arrangements?
So it's a shared parking arrangement and if I go to the site plan. So the event center will share all of this parking and this parking here and then eventually we're gonna build a parking garage, one here and one in this location. And this parking will service, this parking is designed as these two surface lots here to service the event center, one restaurant and then the marine operations. So before we can move the development beyond to more restaurants or to other future phases, we would have to either build a cer, an additional surface lot on the west side of Avenue C. Or we, what we plan to do is put a parking garage on the site.
And right there where you just had the cursor at, I guess, is that parking space gonna be, I guess, that parking lot, is that to accommodate the actual, there's no boat launching, right? At the Marina?
Right, there's no boat launching, but there is a hundred and forty marine wet slips, so.
Okay.
It has quite a bit of activity, people going dive, out on dive boats, people coming to use their boats to go to Peanut Island.
Okay, I don't know why, when I think of Marina, I'm always thinking boat launching, so, okay, that's not, that's not something that we can expect here. Okay, additionally, if you can go back to the slide that had the, the ground floor.
Yep.
You cited there will be a restaurant and that, that wouldn't be the tiki restaurant, would it?
No.
Or proposed?
This would be, we have to actually find a.
Okay, but it wouldn't be something that'd be operated by the, I guess, the CRA or the Marina per se?
The CRA will, will operate the event center, but we will sublease, sublease this to a restaurant operator.
Okay, um. Yeah, the, the proposed, I guess, the, the standalone, possibly the tiki restaurant, where would that be? And it wouldn't be on the Marina Event Center, but.
So there's the event center, this is looking west from the water and the new tiki would go right in this spot right there. So there's Bicentennial, there's the new event center, there's the parking lot servicing the event center and then the new tiki would be right there.
So just a little further north where we see the, it looks almost like a beach per se, but there's palm trees on it, what, what is that exactly, is that?
So this is where, there's already a beach there, but we're gonna bring in new sand, we're gonna expand the beach area, we're gonna put a couple of vendor kiosks, right now if you go down to the Marina, you basically scattered all around, you have different vendors who you can rent a paddleboard or kayak or different, or canoe or different types of various watercrafts. They'll actually have their, their vendor kiosks and their storage right, right down near the beach so that when people come in they'll know they can go down right and they'll be able to manage their facility. Right now you're sort of renting it here and then you're walking down here or over here where they temporarily have their storage, but we'll have permanent kiosks for those, those businesses, so they'll be incorporated right on both the north and south side of the beach.
And I have one last question, just based on the slides that we've seen up to this point, as far as management, the CRA will be managing the Marina operations, I guess, at this point on and that is correct?
Yes, CRA has leased the entire property from the city of Riviera Beach, so we will be managing all of the upwind facility. We've hired Mark Plumke, he actually used to do event management for the Breakers Hotel for over twelve years. And so he's going to manage and pre-lease the event center and he will also help us manage all of the different events that are going to be going on once, once we open up the new tiki and the phase one. The city will continue to operate the wet slips, so they'll be, they'll have their marine offices, their bathrooms, their showers like they do now, they'll be located at the south end and they'll be like a tenant, so the Marina operations will be run by the city, but they'll be located on the upwind which is all managed by CRA.
And let me clarify, I heard you say you hired Mark Plumke, is he like a employee, is he a contractor or consultant?
He's a full-time employee for the CRA.
Oh, okay, now, so you said it'll be ran by the city, Marina operations will be ran by the city. So I guess my question is, so what happens to the Marina as, as we know it now, like the staff and the structure that, that currently exists, how would that work?
Long term, the city's looking at moving towards third-party management, so two or three years from now, maybe a bit sooner, but that's the, the basic timeframe, they're gonna look to hire a private company to manage all of the wet slip rentals. And in the interim, the existing Marina staff that's there now will continue to operate just like they have been.
Up until what point?
The city is proposing to put out an RFQ probably next year that will invite private companies to propose to run the and rent the wet slips.
Okay, so up until the third-party company comes in, you know, the, the structure still remains the same?
Yes, and that probably would be until at least two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
So I guess, being that the case, then we can expect that, um, construction is gonna last two years?
Yes, this construction, we're, we're hoping to be done about one year from now, but immediately following that, a few months, we'd like to begin, be starting on phase two, the parking garage at the south end.
Okay.
But all of the, all of this area that we're looking at will all be finished and the tiki will still be under construction, that probably won't be finished until January twenty sixteen.
Okay, sounds good, I will yield to Miss Davis, I think you had a question?
Could you go back to your parking, parking? Um, how, on the ground parking, I guess, is that six and seven?
Yes.
How many spaces are there?
I apologize, I, I don't know, this particular plan doesn't show how many spaces there is.
Do you have a general idea?
About three hundred and something.
And is that enough to accommodate the, the wet slips and the event center and the restaurants?
It's only enough to accommodate the event center, one restaurant, the tiki, and then the Marina wet slips. So if, if we do anything else, if we wanted to build a second restaurant here or a third restaurant, or we wanna do marine retail or some, some additional elements like a public market that are in the, in the long-term plans, we have to add more parking.
It seems like with the, you know, this big event center, that it would be pretty easy to fill up the parking lot as it stands pretty quick for a couple of those big events.
Uh, yeah, if we have a big event, we will have to, this, this whole area here right now is also overflow parking.
Oh, okay.
So, for example, on holiday weekends, there's a lot of traffic coming through the Marina to go visit Peanut Island. So that, that, those lots get filled up, the overflow grass lot get filled up during those times and that will still be available.
And then how does it work with the kitchen facilities, each restaurant, there's two restaurants that are going to be in this, in the center, do they have to provide their own kitchen or do they use the kitchen from the event center?
Uh, the restaurants, the ones that are going to be located on these development sites here, is that what you're referring?
I thought you, I think you said that there's going to be two restaurants inside the event center.
Right. So they will have to have their own kitchens.
Oh, okay.
And in fact, I've been talking with some of our Realtor advisors, we're actually gonna have, have a small kitchen on, this is the second floor, on the second floor also. And this, I'll just point out, this is the second floor and I apologize, this diagram isn't very good, but I'll try and do a good job of describing it, so you'll come up these circular staircase to the second floor. And then if you travel east, you would come out onto this, the gray is an open patio deck and so that, and then this is a, a large bar. So here you could order appetizers, have drinks, you're looking out over the coastal and this would be ran and managed by the restaurant which is directly below it, right here. And if you go to the west, this is our event patio space and this will be, this will have its own bar area, which will actually have some TVs, there'll be TVs over here too. And this looks out over Bicentennial Park over here and this is Avenue C and then this is the rest of the Marina project. So you could rent this outdoor space also for outdoor events, if we have a concert in the park, this would be a great spot where we can get large crowds, people who can come up here, have a drink, have something to eat and, and sort of watch the entertainment that's, that's gonna be going on in the park.
Do you have a presentation for how the park, I, I think from my memory, there was, when we talked about the outdoor park, there was going to be the ability for it to quite remember to have, for big events, outdoor events?
Um, yes, I actually, I have a couple of slides here of.
There wasn't exactly a stadium, but wasn't there?
Yes, we have a covered pavilion.
Yes, that's it.
I, I think I have a slide I'll hope to that. As I'm passing by, this is a view of the event center, this is our public plaza space, this is our, our fountain, it's not quite finalized in design yet, so it's gonna look nicer than that. This is a view of the new event center from Bicentennial Park and that's the second floor looking out over the intercoastal. That is the view from the second story outdoor patio bar and that's, that's the exact view, so you can see it's quite, it's quite, quite a good look at Peanut Island, you can see the water, the Marina. And that's another view, this is from the events patio space and you can, you can see there, it's, it's also gonna have a very good view. That's the interior gallery, this is the space, so this is the large ballroom where we have three hundred and twenty, we can seat three hundred and twenty people for our dinner and then on the other side is the two smaller community spaces. And we've envisioned putting History of Riviera Beach on some of these walls and we could also bring in various art, art exhibits and galleries if we wanted to feature a special event in this facility. That's a look at the new events center space and here it's set up for like a, a formal dinner with a wedding, maybe this is a dance floor and you can have a DJ up here. We had a company who would help us design this building and they said that one of our primary users on the weekends will be weddings.
Question, if you, if you're done, Miss Davis?
Yes, thank you.
So did we lose the concept of having a name after Newcombe, did we not have that anymore?
We haven't finalized all the names, including what the entire project is gonna be, is gonna be called, we're gonna have a, a workshop to work through what the best branding would be for this facility.
Okay.
Right now, the current thinking though, is that the Newcombe name would remain on the main ballroom, so the main ballroom would be called the Newcombe Ballroom. So we've changed the name of the whole center, but we still, at this point, plan to call the main ballroom Newcombe Hall.
Have, have we decided that definitely it will be called the Marina Event Center, because that just doesn't sound appealing to me, I mean?
Right, no, we haven't, that's one of the items that will have to be workedshopped and we're gonna bring in real estate experts to help us figure out how we create. This first phase is just the first step, it's designed to encourage a lot of, a lot more private development and so that's really what we have to keep our, keep our focus on, because we wanna create a destination here with three, four, five restaurants, multiple stores, shops, retail. So we really wanna, we gotta pick the right brand.
Right, um, if we can jump back a couple of slides when we had the, I guess, the, and I'll let you know, but this, this, this project, I mean, the, not so much the interior view, but the actual conceptual. No, a little further, but this project seems so massive right here, is this it, no, actually that's not it. But the entire Marina project seems so massive, now, if you look at this, if you look at this rendering in full capacity, even at number nine and ten being the parking garage. If everything was really, really to capacity, we had the event center and we had the restaurants and maybe even in the unlikely event that there'll be a concert or some, something going on at Amphitheater, I mean, we have to go pretty, what's our limit on this parking garage? It has to be at least five or six stories, because I just don't see that, how we can possibly accommodate if this was operating at full capacity, all of the vehicles and the traffic that'll be coming out, because this is a really great project, I'm, I'm just thinking we're a little constrained with parking and I'm not sure if we can sustain, you know, if this place was running at full capacity.
Yes, I, long term, we need two parking garages and if we introduce any residential, and it's our strong desire to do so, the market is starting to come back and we've targeted this block here for residential and possibly this, this area here, as well as redevelopment of Spanish Courts. Having people live right nearby would really inject a lot of economic power into the ability for the restaurants to have a really busy, we know that we can make it work at dinner, but keeping them busy during lunch hours and, and at a variety of different, and keeping people at the Marina as many hours of the day as possible is greatly enhanced if we can get residential to come. But any residential that comes will also have to come with a parking garage, this parking will be so demanding. So if we get residential, we get three or four restaurants and just some new retail, we're looking at two to three parking garages and the first two that will be built would be, you're right, at least four stories and they would be worth five hundred cars each.
And there wouldn't be any costs associated with those, with the parking, I mean?
Um, the garages, they have some payback, so they don't, they're not gonna make a lot of money for us, especially because you usually, when you build a new project like City Place for example, and we've looked at a variety of models. You have to provide free parking at the start to get people used to coming in, invite them to come to your project, if it's wildly successful, which we hope it is, then you can start to charge for parking and then pay off your debt on your parking garage, but we're, we're looking at it like we need to have the money to, to build a parking garage and at least carry it for, for two or three years until we can generate some revenue. Another example is downtown at the Gardens and they've determined that they can't charge for parking, so they built a garage similar to what City Place does, but it continues to be free because they just don't have the, the seven day a week demand or the charge.
Okay, um, and then you, you, you mentioned the bar. Currently, I guess, being it at the Marina, which is still technically city property, I'm not sure I've worked with tiki, are there any time constraints or is there a, a certain hour that, you know, we no longer allow alcohol? Because it, it technically still is the city's property per se, is that done by policy, is it done by something in ordinance, how does that work?
So we'll follow the city's ordinance on hours, which I think is alcohol sales until two AM, so.
Now, is that retail or is that actually at a, is that like if a retail establishment can't sell after two, is that actually purchasing a beverage?
I think, I don't think that you, I think it applies to both.
To both?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I thought I heard someone on this end, Mister Hamilton, record that for a question.
Going back to level one.
Um, hold on just a moment, I don't hear your microphone, try to get.
Level one?
Okay.
Try to get Mister Hamilton, I wanna make sure it's.
Testing, one, two, three.
There you go.
You were going over the occupancies and I wanted to jot down those numbers and then find out what was Newcombe Hall's occupancy.
Sure. So the main ballroom is forty-five hundred square feet and then the adjacent community space is two thousand square feet. And then the pre-function area, which is a space in between the main ballroom and the community space. It's also, I believe, about, it's a little bit more, but about fifteen hundred square feet. And I, I mentioned the pre-function, because if you're having a really large facility, so you have a speaker up front, and then rows of chairs in here, you could actually put your, um, your food, your banquet, all, all of your services out in the pre-function, which, which actually lets this function have some even larger space.
And the number of people the ballroom would be able to handle?
So this main ballroom can seat three hundred and twenty people. And if we wanted to have a different setup, we could, we could have close to four hundred, if you're gonna have just a speaker and then rows of chairs.
Okay, and the community room?
The community room is two thousand square feet. Um, so it's a, it's a proxim, I don't recall the number, but it's about a hundred and fifty people.
And the former Newcombe Hall?
So the former Newcombe Hall is about thirty-five hundred square feet. Um, and then it has that back bar area, so the whole thing's about thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-eight hundred.
So it's held about three hundred and twenty also?
Um, so that would, that would put it in the, in the, about two eighty. But it's, um, significantly different in that if you have food service in the existing Newcombe Hall, that has to be right in the main room, whereas you could put, you know, up, be up three hundred, three hundred and twenty, four hundred people in this main room, and then you have all of your food service, uh, here if you want it. And this is a catering kitchen. So this is directly adjacent to the main ballroom. And so caterers will be able to come in here through this service access, and then they'll be able to prepare, warm up food, prepare food, and then that can be delivered to the main ballroom. Thank you.
Okay, um, just a moment. If, uh, there's no opposition, I wanna designate Ms. Brooks as vice chair just for the sake of it. I have to step out for a moment. Um, if there's no opposition, hearing none, then in the event that I need to step out, Ms. Brooks, if that's okay? Alright, does anybody else have a question?
Yes, I do. Um, I can't remember exactly when this, uh, occurred, but I think it was either someone who was on the Marina, uh, board would express some concern about the, um, ability for emergency vehicles to get to where they needed to be. It was, I don't remember, Scott, if it was the size of the street, the width, or how they were get, or, or what. Do you remember?
Yes.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, the concern was that we'd be able to get large vehicles down, uh, close to the water if need be, and I'm just gonna cycle back to the site, man. So we have access, and, and the main, the main measuring, um, unit is a large, full-scale fire truck, uh, which requires the largest turning radius. So this is, project is designed to accommodate a fire truck, um, the largest one they have. So it could, it could make the turn, it could come all the way down right, right adjacent to the docks here. So that's a roadway, can make that complete loop. And then this second loop at the north end is capable of supporting a fire truck and get right down here right by the Tiki. And then we've made a third access here. This, um, paved or walkway is reinforced, so that it can withstand a large vehicle to drive down it. So you can get access right down close to the water at three points right here, this, this loop, and then the south loop.
And with regard to the boat, the space just behind the boats, the walkway, I guess, there? Is that a walkway? How, and where are people going to, um, where do you drop them off, and if they're, if they have a lot of belongings or coolers and that sort of thing? How do they get from point A to point B?
The, the way we see the main Marina uses operating is out of the south end. That's where, this is where the Marina operations is gonna be. Additionally, um, actually, I think I have a better, better slide to show you. Yes, this one. So you can see that there's, um, we had to bring in quite a bit of fill for the whole upland, so there's, uh, quite a bit of a diff, a height difference here between the main promenade, which is adjacent to the docks. And this is a minimum of fifteen feet wide, thirty feet wide in some sections, so this is a broad promenade. And this is, this will be open to the public, primarily used a lot by the Marina, golf carts will be able to run up and down this, uh, facility. And then on the second tier, here, there'll be another pro, promenade. You can, you'll be able to walk along the wall here, and then also along this main corridor here. So it's all, all open to the public, all centered around this main plaza. And at a variety of spots, you can get up and down, um, we have a combination of ramps and stairs. So whichever your preference, you'll be able to take a ramp or stairs in, in a variety of different locations. Now, I, I, I mention this because it's ramps and stairs in this section, but down at the south end, which is a primary area for the Marina, um, we've actually, what we've done is the road actually slopes down. So that if you come down this access here, and we have some parking spaces, temporary ones, where you can drop off, this road is at the same elevation as the docks. So you will be able to drop your equipment off, and you won't have to carry it down any steps or down any ramps, because we purposely designed it, and it was actually quite, quite an amount of cost. But so that you, when you come down like this, when you pull into these temporary spots here, you can unload your dive gear, or drop off your, your picnic basket to go over to Peanut Island, um, and then you can go and park, and you can have your stuff in this area. And then Marina operations, uh, will be right in that area too.
And is the reason, the reason for the difference in levels, is that so that the businesses that are on the upper level don't necessarily see all the work going on in the lower level, like loading, unloading, or?
It's definitely good to have some separation, but the primary motivation, um, is in order to meet new flood regulations, the buildings have to be at a certain height. So we're forced with the decision of having all of your buildings, we'd have to go upstairs to go into every building, which is not an ideal situation, so we're bringing up all of the area around each of the buildings, so that it all, um, is a nice connected public promenade, you can walk from Bicentennial into the pub, into the public plaza area without having to go up and down all the steps. The whole site, gonna bring up, uh, three or four feet at a cost of almost a million dollars.
Thanks.
Um, I have another question. How many slips do we, roughly, just a rough estimate of, of the number of slips that's gonna be available for, uh, for next rental?
We will have a hundred and forty boat slips. Additionally, I don't, oh yeah, there we go. So in this phase here, we'll have, then we'll accommodate a hundred and forty boats, var, and a variety of sizes, starting from twenty feet all the way up to eighty feet. And then the Marina's gonna keep all of the outside perimeter of this dock here, and this outside perimeter, that will be open to transient boats. So if you wanna come to the Tiki, you'll be able to pull up here and, and, and leave your boat, and those, those sites won't be rented, so that'll, because we anticipate once this gets going, we're gonna get a lot of boat traffic. So we're gonna, we're gonna have all of this remedial open to the public.
Okay, great.
And the Marina's also actually in for permit on additional permitting, so they're trying to bring more docks, um, and more west ups to this area, so they could, they could get as high as two hundred slips, uh, in the next, uh, four years.
Well, that's what my question was, that, that whole ambience, like, you know, if you visit, where, which was Panama Jack's or Waterway Cafe, you can arrive by boat if, you know, if you had that, uh, I just was concerned about the waterway accessibility, so that's great that you have some sort of accommodation for those that arrive by boat. So great, um, any other questions?
After Phase One construction, there will be parking for approximately six hundred vehicles.
Um, I don't have the exact number, but it's, yeah, I think it's approximately about four hundred, I think it, I wanna say three eighty-two, or, or something in that, that time, that area. And I just wanna go back to, Ms. Davis had asked about the Bicentennial Park. So the park will feature, this is a look at, um, the covered pavilion. And we're going to, we decided to go with, uh, stage rentals, so this will have a pad where you can bring in a stage that's appropriate for whatever type of event you're going to have. And we did this primarily because ninety-five percent of the time, there's no event happening. So instead of having a stage which is not gonna be able to use, it'll be public open space, we can put tables and chairs, and people can use it as a part of their regular use of the park. And then if we have an event, then the stage would go here and be under the covered pavilion, um, for use.
That's not retractable, is it?
No.
So it's just a basic pad, nothing else on top?
Right, and then we'll bring in a stage depending on what we need. Uh, this is a public bathroom, and it's also a concession area, so when we have events, we'll actually have a built concession area um, there, and then on the other side of that is the children's interactive playhouse.
Okay.
And this is some of our signage, uh, this is conceptual still right now, but we really wanna create a marquee entrance and signage to the, the project, so we're still working through permitting on this, but uh, this is some of, one of the main concepts that we've drilled down on.
Who would, who would, you need to work with permitting on?
Um, we have the site exactly where on the site, we're in the right way, all of the different signs are gonna go. For example, this is proposed to be a main marquee at Thirteenth and Broadway. This, for example, would be as you, so this would be the main sign, and, and the reason it's not finished is because we're still going through the branding, so we're not sure it's gonna be called the Marina District.
Right.
Uh, you can see it's got a nice sail theme to it, and the idea is you've arrived, when you see this sign from Broadway, you, you know that you've arrived at the, uh, destination. And then as you make the turn and go down Thirteenth Street, you'll see various monument signs, represented in the same colors and themes, but starting to starting to drill down on this way to the event center, or go left towards the Marina operations, or boat slips, so and then as you get right to the Marina, there'll be additional signage, uh, that will help guide you all the way, because we wanna have wayfinding. If you get off ninety-five, we would like you to be able to see this way to the Marina District. So as a part of just the signage package for the whole development, it's, we're gonna try to reach out, so that if you get off ninety-five in the, in the, the area, that you can find signage that leads you all the way to the destination.
This is Scott, and they, um, the, the signage packages that are currently being developed, that was part of the reason why we went through the signage workshop, I believe it was last meeting or meeting prior to that, just to discuss the existing signage regulations, um, any changes that may need to happen, any amendments. So that's something that we'll come back to the board in the future.
Next steps, so I spent some time talking about, um, what's happening right now, what's under construction, which, what will be opening. Hopefully, Labor Day of twenty fifteen will be our grand opening celebration, and it won't be just a one-day event. We're looking at a whole weekend with an outdoor concert, we really wanna kick the project off and invite the whole region, uh, to come. This, this shows that the, a conceptual build out of the whole project, all of the phases, about ten years in. But I bring it, I, I bring it up just to talk about what we're gonna be working on next, which is, this is the, the with the area where we're looking to put a parking garage, a permanent Marina facilities, maybe some retail, some marine-related office. So that component is what we're starting to negotiate with Viking, and we'll end up back before you, hopefully, early next year. And this is, uh, this, this particular building right here, this is the future public market. And I'll, I'll drill down on that a little bit more, um, on, on next slide. The public market, um, we recently got a grant from Palm Beach County of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help us design this facility. And the first thing we had to do was negotiate with Viking to get control of the entire site. Because the CRA, the city and Viking all, all own scattered pieces of property in the Marina District. Uh, so we had to swap property in order to create, uh, get enough land together for the public market. So that's the north side of Thirteenth Street there, so now Viking controls that entire block. The city gave them a couple of blocks, which gave them the, the ownership of the whole block. So they'll be working to bring the next phase on that part. And then Viking now controls this block also, so this is just to orient you, this is Broadway, and this is the entrance to Thirteenth Street. And this is the public market site, which we now control. So after we swap properties with Viking, we now control this site of the public market, and Viking will have these for their future development.
Does that mean you own it?
Yes, we are. And that's-
Can we go back, Scott?
Yeah, sure.
Now, meanwhile, we're, we're, we're redeveloping our Marina. Is there anything, I guess, I don't know if you could even determine at this point, that Viking has, you know, coming down the path that's concerning developing or expanding operations of some of those, um, I guess, existing boatyards, because?
Right, that, that's their existing facility right there. They actually, they have been in expansion mode now, this is their service facility, they build their boats in New Jersey. And they're at maximum capacity in this facility, so they also own, um, another facility, uh, about four blocks north of here. And that was a vacant property, uh, just a few years ago, but it's now ramped up and, and it's busy too. So they now actually have two active service facilities in, in, in the CRA, in Riviera Beach. But as far as the Marina itself, they're actively pursuing the, the parking garage that we know we need. And we are negotiating to sublease all of the restaurant pads, um, to Viking. And that includes the Tiki site, Viking is working cooperatively with the existing owner of the Tiki to try and bring that restaurant back as our first, as our first private development site. And this is our, our public market, which we hope to get, we're gonna design it, eventually it will come back to you, but not until we, we get the rest of the funding for it, it's about a ten million dollar project. We actually applied for Newmarket's tax credit, um, funding last year, and, um, the previous year, we applied and we got a rating of good. And then the next year, we applied and we got a rating of excellent, thanks to our executive director, that's his specialty. And if you get high excellent, which is that, like, the top, then that's how you get funded. So we're hopeful that this, this year, since we got excellent last year, that we'll, we'll make that last step to get to high excellent, which would allow us to fund, uh, the, uh, public market. And incidentally, the event center was funded through Newmarket Tax Credits. Uh, so that, that actually helped us, um, keep that building so nice, um, with two, two finished, uh, floors, and all the amenities in it, because we were able to bring in one point five million dollars of tax credit money to the event center.
Ms. Davis?
Why is, why does it cost ten million dollars for the public market? What's, why is it so expensive?
Uh, it's a large indoor/outdoor facility. Uh, the actual cost estimate is between eight and twelve million. Um, a, a, a big driver of that is that that facility will need a lot of parking. So in order to build a public market, we have to build a parking garage. So that combination, um, makes it, um, fairly, fairly expensive.
And when you're talking about a public market, it, I mean, it's more than a grocery store?
Uh, yes, yeah, um, it's, it's much more than that, it's prepared foods, um, it's some retail operations. It is similar growth, to grocery, but it would be like specialty, you would have a butcher and a vegetable person, and and then you would also have somebody who sells prepared foods. So it's, it's a, it's a concept right now, but, um, for public markets that do function, they're not big moneymakers, but they can get huge draws, and if we can get a thousand people a day coming to a public market, the amount of private development that we could get in the surrounding area, and the new residential we could attract would be significantly enhanced. Uh, some of the most valuable residential properties, um, are adjacent to, to active public markets in some of the larger cities like Philadelphia and Seattle.
Thank you.
It's alright, the board, if I could take a few more minutes of your time, I'd like to talk about a few other things we have going on. Uh, this shows two buildings that we've acquired on Singer Island. Um, you can see our banners that we've put up on those buildings, um, they are vacant and, um, lighted, especially the former Buddy's building. So I'm very happy- So I'm very happy to announce that we will be knocking those buildings down and returning them to greenfield development sites. And we haven't determined what will go there in its place. But just getting rid of those vacant eyesores, I think will, will start a significant transformation of Singer Island that we've been planning. We've got a few other things happening. The CRA, we, we've, we've created a new clean and safe ambassador program. I don't know if you've heard about them or seen them around, but we have up to twelve new employees who work a variety of shifts. And their current focus is along Broadway Avenue E in the Marina District and then also on Singer Island, specifically around the Ocean Mall. And they're there to pick up trash and to greet visitors, provide directions and add a level of safety and comfort to people who are coming to visit. Because there's always eyes on the street welcoming our guests, making people feel safe. And they're going, we're currently negotiating a lease. So they're going to have an office right on Singer Island with a visible presence of the CRA's Clean and Safe Ambassador Program. And this is the Gator Greater right here, if you see that sign right there. And that's the existing parking lot right there. And the Ocean Mall, even though it's only thirty percent leased up right now, because of the demand of the beach and because of the demand of the two anchor restaurants, that those parking lots fill up during season. So we're going to expand the parking available. This parking lot right here, we're just going to pave this vacant lot here. The CRA has leased that for the next, um, I believe, five years. And so we're going to put a parking lot there to try and alleviate some of the parking problems that exist. And towards a long-term parking garage, we'd like to bring to Singer Island, which would hopefully allow more development. And just to show you, the two buildings that we're going to demolish are right there. This is Beach Court across from Ocean Mall and the ocean's over here. So we're going to take out those two blighted buildings, which we've heard has held back the redevelopment of, of Ocean Mall because people don't like to look at, at the vacant spaces. We also have a variety of-
Just, just a moment.
Sure.
Do you have a question at the slide that you, that is just up, Ms.?
I do. I just wondered with the ambassador program, are those the people that were hired to do that job? Or do you know if they're city residents?
Um, I believe many of them are city residents, yes.
Okay.
I don't know the exact number, but-
Um, actually, that's, I had a couple of questions. How long is that going to last?
Well, that program is, is, is planned to go on indefinitely.
And it's funded through the CRA?
Yes, the CRA funds it on an annual basis from the tax increment financing model that we have. And we, we plan to maintain that program, grow it as we get more development.
Well, um, and if I can just have a little latitude to deviate a little bit. Tell you why I ask these questions. First thing you said that they're, the very first thing you said they do is pick up trash. You know, um, that's probably not what I would have had the idea that they were supposed to do, even though it's clean and safe. But to pick up trash, I'm sure we have our public works or whatever it is. But I've seen them out and I, you know, you can't help but notice them. I think they have one lime green and blue, but they really stand out. And I think they do a good job of lease along the Broadway Quarter, at least where I've seen them. In making their presence known. But I'm just, a couple of things that comes into my mind when you look at the CRA and where it is now and some of the redevelopments. For those of you that participated in the planning and zoning conference that we did over the summer, I think it might have been in, oh my goodness, was it May or June?
It was the end of May, first of June.
I know the city of West Palm Beach gave a presentation about some of the projects that they had going on and the amount of economic development and some of the proposed projects that they had going on. You know, I caught a glimpse of the CRA's budget meeting, I believe it was, and helped me out. I thought I heard that the proposed budget that they just approved was thirty-eight million or somewhere around there.
Mm-hmm, yes, that's correct.
And just thinking about thirty-eight million dollars, and I know the city's budget, and excuse me if, I'm kind of finance person and I kind of watch these things, but the city's budget is somewhere around fifty-one or fifty-two. I just don't see how that's proportioned. And what I could, you know, I guess my best guess on why they're so closely, I mean, in, in numbers, is that we have a lot of redevelopment going on in our city and the CRA is really involved. And with that, I would like to kind of know what those projects are. Where is this money that, you know, we can levy from, you know, those homes that's in the CRA district and those businesses that contribute to the tax base? I want to see how that money is being put back into the community. Because I, again, I think we're doing a great job. I would like to kind of give an idea of how we're spending this money. So, you know, just something for thought. I mean, I think the presentation is great, but, you know, there was a mention and I was reviewing, uh, some of the ordinance and our duties. I want to know, you know, as far as capital projects, how does, how does this financing aspect work into the planning and zoning component of what it is that we do as members of the board? So I, I guess, this is not a, a formal request, but I would like to see if we can kind of have a presentation on how, you know, the CRA budget works and, you know, some of the projects that's going on, what we can expect in the next two or three years. Not so much from the conceptual site plan and master plan project, but from the financing and, you know, where the money moves at. I, I think that's something I would like to see. Additionally, um, at least for the city, I know one of, I remember Ms. James first bringing it up that we are, we do have one of the, I guess, I don't know if we call it a duty per se, but we can make our recommendations to the capital budget. And if that's something that we can have a thorough presentation on, you know, I, I think we're doing a great job in the city, but I want to see how we can be more involved in the process and we can offer our recommendations or our advice and, you know, just to be a part of it. But I think us having a good understanding of how it all works is at least the beginning of it. So I guess for Scott, if you can kind of take that back and, you know, brainstorm on what'll work best and as well as Jeff on, on the city side, I think, you know, that, that would definitely work for us because we're, we're approving the projects and we're seeing things that's coming through here. But I think knowing how the financing work and what those numbers are and some of what our tax base is and that we get back from some of these businesses that contribute would really help us in what it is that we do. So, uh, that's my comment. And if there aren't any others, the presentation, you can-
Um, I, I will just add, uh, the city reports their, their budget based on what they get annually. So I think you said it was fifty million, I'm not-
Fifty, anywhere from fifty to fifty-two, I think it-
So each year, that's how much they spend. The CRA's budget each year is only six million dollars.
Six?
Yeah, so we're, we're quite a bit smaller than the city. Um, the reason it gets reported as thirty-something is because we borrowed a significant amount of money from BB and T Bank to build all of the infrastructure improvements.
Wow, see, and that's exactly why we need the presentation. Because when I turned on Channel Eighteen, I heard that number thirty-something I made and I'm thinking, wow, why is that so closely related to the city if that's just a small portion? But I didn't stick around long enough to really get into the nuts and bolts of it. But I think that's why it's important that, you know, we can be involved in that, that'll be great.
And I'll just move really quickly now. Um, what I can do is bring back a presentation on all our, all of our capital projects at future date. This is one of them. And this just, they are mobilizing this week, I'm very happy to say. And it's hard to make out, but all of the black lines on this, this screen here indicate brand-new sidewalks that are going in. This is the Riviera Beach Heights neighborhood, which has some existing sidewalks, but for the most part is missing quite a few linkages. So all of these lines indicate all new sidewalks that are going under construction and they've now started that.
There will be no duplications on the, um, seven-ten project, correct?
Uh, correct, right. We're not doing any sidewalks along seven-ten. Those will all be provided by FDOT. That's the seven-ten quarter there. So you can see that we've got some cross-connection linkages going in, but no new sidewalks. This, the F dot will put those in.
Scott, just a quick question on the sidewalks. Were there ever sidewalks there? I know you said you're doing the linkages. Were there sidewalks there before?
Um, I would say there's some areas that have old, broken sidewalks that we're replacing. Uh, that's maybe twenty percent. Um, another sixty percent, there's no sidewalks whatsoever. And then a couple of the streets have fairly new sidewalks that will actually blend in, in well with our new ones. There's, there's new ones along Sixth Street. You can see we haven't proposed any here, I mean, rather, yeah, Sixth, because they already exist. And then Tenth Street also has some.
Thank you.
Question about Old Dixie, and this might be a question for Jeff. That, um, I know we got some new medians put in on Old Dixie. Who, that street, is that a county road, Old Dixie Highway? Because I was concerned about, I seen that, uh, there were median strips, maybe, maybe within the last couple of years that was put on there. Who, who controls or who designates where those turns are, is that?
That, uh, Old Dixie is, is a county road. So that those new changes that the county's done have been funded by the county.
Okay, great, good enough for me, thanks.
And I know, I don't know if you've noticed our, uh, little corner improvement. This is at the corner of Broadway and Blue Heron. And we've actually now added some night lighting. So our sign advertising the Marina District and our ongoing changes in, in the Broadway corridors there. And we put in our little landscape package. And this tree wasn't doing quite so well, um, when we first put it in, but I'm happy to report that it's come back. I got quite a few calls, actually, on it. People saying they like it, but worried about whether it was going to make it or not. And I was too, since they cost over a thousand dollars each. But, uh, it has since come back and done quite well. And this, I'll, I'll point out, we, we own this building now, the CRA's acquired it. It's the Cash America. And we are currently going through a design process to reface that building and put a new facade on it so that it looks like a brand-new, a new, brand-new structure. And we also own the Dairy Bell. Uh, we're looking at redoing that, that building. The parking doesn't really work very well in that area. Additionally, there's almost no landscaping whatsoever. So we're going to bring and develop a site plan that would bring back, make the building a brand-new, create some space for maybe a community art mural, um, and then also add landscaping and redo the parking lot and redo Dairy Bell, um, if they're interested in, in staying on as a tent. That's our community garden at night. We're very excited about this project. Um, it's also just started construction. This is on Tenth Street, close to Australian. So this will have a variety of planting beds. This is a shaded area. This is the hydroponic area and then a small temporary structure, which, and we're going to bring in permanent bathrooms now. Uh, so those are, be under design, but they'll be built in a second phase. This is, uh, our samples of our resi, new red, planted residential, uh, project. And this, these two samples, or three rather, are, uh, future homes, affordable houses funded through the county's, uh, grant program that we have, were awarded. And Anita Jenkins is managing this project. She's done a great job of going out and getting a million dollars to build, um, I believe, eight to ten new homes. And all of these homes feature front porches, uh, which is important to try and create more people on the street, which, which enhances safety. And they'll all be, uh, welcome additions. In some cases, we'll be carrying down abandoned houses to put them up or they'll just be on vacant lots, trying to make improvements within the neighborhood. So the county's been very helpful and Anita Jenkins is, is leading up that effort. We're also, um, expanding our boundaries. And that's towards the UFPL-built power plant has been built. And that's going to generate more TIF revenue. Right now, we have about six million dollars per year, but starting in twenty sixteen, uh, that number will go probably to about twelve million dollars per year. Uh, so the CRA is going to have a, another bump in the amount of money that we have to reinvest in the community. And our number one goal is to improve property value and enhance economic growth. So, uh, we are looking at duplicating all of the programs we currently have in some of the other areas of the city. So this study is now undergoing underway. This is the Riviera Beach Heights neighborhood, where we have new sidewalks going in, community park, a linear park, uh, the community garden. And so, but a lot of people in this neighborhood have said, well, why is the CRA only a small portion of the, this neighborhood? And the neighborhood actually has clearly defined boundaries. Uh, this is the city line, it's a FPL transmission line, and this is some industrial, uh, property. So this, this study area will look at expanding the entire Riviera Beach Heights neighborhood and adding it to the CRA so that we could spend the new tax dollars that we envision coming in in the future to continue to enhance, uh, the neighborhoods. And this is a small area on Singer Island where we'll be studying, uh, expanding the batteries in this area. This is, uh, Blue Heron, this is the Ocean Mall. It's just a couple of, uh, pockets here where we'd like to, um, pursue parking garage, street improvements, landscaping, uh, to try and make improvements here. This is, uh, ninety-five, Blue Heron, Old Dixie. So we're going to study this area, uh, and maybe enhancing the border all the way along the corridor. And this would allow us to put in beautification, landscaping, signage, and possibly make improvements in this neighborhood. We don't, we're studying a wide variety of property, like, for example, this entire neighborhood. We don't anticipate that it would all come in, but we just wanted to have a look so we can really target some of the best areas where if we add them to the CRA, we could then invest in new streetlights, new roadways, new, um, new housing and improvements. So I just wanted to bring to your attention that we're studying expansion of the CRA boundaries uh, towards being able to spend CRA dollars on a wider area within the city.
That's almost all of Riviera Beach.
Exactly, that's why-
That doesn't sound like just a study area. That's almost all of Riviera Beach. You have Silver, Silver Beach, you have Blue Heron. You've almost covered it all, I mean-
Well, again, we're not going to expand to it all, but we wanted to study, study it so we can identify the best areas. Like, for example, I'm a strong proponent of expanding it in the Old Dixie corridor. If you drive up and down Old Dixie, you've got, on one side, you've got the railroad tracks. And on the other side, you've got a lot of failed commercial properties, um, failed industrial properties. So that's badly in need of improvements, probably improvement grants, facade improvements, new landscaping buffer to try and, and hide both the port down south and, and some of the industrial, uh, properties that are, are located on the east side, uh, towards Silver Beach Road.
Scott, if I can interrupt you, 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 you kind of pointed out, I guess, you cited because some areas are black and are in need of improvement. But I guess, I don't really understand what's the purpose of it going to the CRA because, you know, just the idea that it's already in the city, that's what I would believe community development does. And what are some of the factors? I mean, you just said that you guys, I mean, I'm, I'm, and I, I don't want to, let me posture how I say this because I'm, I'm certainly not taking anything from community development, but I'm sure you guys have a specialty in actually redeveloping and they're more of a, you know, I know they have the planning department and the building department, but you guys really specialize. And I'm certainly not going to, um, discount any of their abilities, but why is it something that we actually need to consider? What, what factors other than just eliminating some black? Are there something else?
The number one factor is that we know that our annual budget is going to double. So our options are to ramp up the investment in the existing CRA, which we could do. Build additional development, invest in additional streets, improvements, neighborhood improvements. Or since we're getting such a, a large increase, more, double basically, we decided we wanted to try and expand the boundary so that we could invest the CRA dollars in more neighborhoods throughout the city, rather than continue to, to invest all of the money just in one area.
And, and who, I mean, where, where are we at in this study? Like, are we, is it underway now?
It's just started, so-
How long do we?
It's about a, a six to eight month study.
Will there be any updates along the way? Because I'm really curious about this and I'm, you know, I, I, I'm just, you know, I understand wh- what it is that our intentions are, but I, I'm just a little not, maybe I'm not catching what factors are we looking at? Because you said, you know, we're going to double, I guess, from six to twelve. So is it that we can leverage more by expanding our CRA and, you know, I guess, the terms of financing that, you know, now we have a larger tax base? And, you know, I guess, the terms of financing that, you know, n- now we have a larger tax base coming into the CRA, is that what you mean, that?
Well, we, we won't, a lot of these neighborhoods actually wouldn't generate, even if putting in the CRA, we wouldn't gain any tax revenue from doing that.
Because they're mostly homesteaded.
And they're already built, so, if you add a section to the CRA, all the existing taxes on the day that you add them, continue to go into the city, if you forever, so.
Forever?
Yeah.
Okay.
Until the CRA disbands. And the CRA, this, our current CRA will, um, sunset in twenty forty-four. Um, so eventually, the idea is to invet, re-invest all the additional tax revenue, enhance property values, and then the CRA would go away. And they would have achieved something beyond which, what normally the private market would have done.
Okay, so those tax dollars in those areas will be going to the CRA?
But, we, we would be taking the tax dollars that currently are in the CRA. And we're only allowed to spend it in CRA, so our current budget can only be spent within our boundary.
So, new development, that's, like, I know some places are vacant and there's some parcels that's available on Old Dix- Old Dixie, so new development will go to the CRA?
Yes, so if we expand our boundary, then we can take, take our existing pool of money and spend it in the new areas as well as what we currently have underway.
Okay.
And, um, we will be doing workshops, the part of the program to expect to study and expand these will be, once they, once they narrow down some of the targeted areas that we wanna expand it, for example, say they target, say, they propose that it would be optimum to expand the CRA boundary to include Old Dixie Highway. Um, as part of that study, we will have neighborhood meetings in the specific areas that are affected. Um, so if this area was one of them, there would be a neighborhood meeting for this area, so that we can talk to the residents about what we're proposing. Get an idea from them of what they would like to see if the area was added to the CRA. So that, if that happens, that we do say we did add this particular Park Manor neighborhood, uh, to the CRA. It, those amendments would be based on what the residents wanted, what the kind of improvements the residents would like. And then when we, we add it to the CRA plan, it would be following those neighborhood meetings, which identified, you know, what the residents would like.
Okay, that, that's a little more reassuring, because I was just trying to figure out what's the, okay. Any other questions regarding the?
I have a question.
Ms. James?
What are the, the benefits to the residents other than the improved environment? I mean, what else could a resident, what would be your selling point as you start to go out into community? And have these community, um, meetings to get them on board?
So, um, there's no downside, so that's the first, so they're not gonna be negatively impacted by us adding the CRA, um, their property to the CRA. Um, what we could do is, um, approve new capital improvement projects for their neighborhood. So, if we added the Park Manor neighborhood, then we could bring in new affordable housing programs, infill housing programs.
Where's your Park Manor, 'cause that sounds like near me.
So, this is, um, Avenue E and Br- and Broadway, which is in the existing CRA. And then that's Blue Heron, so we, we're studying the, the neighborhoods which are west of Avenue F.
Oh, okay. I didn't think that was the whole Park Manor.
Do I have the wrong name?
No, that's fine, that's correct.
It is Park Manor?
It's the area of Broadway, between Broadway and, I guess, the railroad tracks, south to, what is Forty-third Street? Is that right? I see a Forty-third Street.
If you see it, it's a state thirteen.
That's a one.
That's a one.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry, I need some, I need to borrow some of his glasses, it looked like Forty-third.
Yes, uh, Jeff actually has the map, there's, this is Park Manor right here.
That is Park Manor, okay.
Okay, um, Ms. Davis, you had a question?
Yes, um, you indicated that next year, I guess from the FPNL, you'll get a bump of, is it additional twelve million, or?
No, um, we're not sure yet, it's kind of complicated how they calculate it, and are really not that forthcoming. But, we know that it will be, uh, over twelve million, and we're currently at six, so we'll be having at least an additional six million.
And without getting into the gory details, when do you pay back the twenty plus million dollar loan debt to BBNT?
I believe that's a twenty-five year note, so, um, it's just, we make annual payments. And we have the option to accelerate.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions up to this point?
I have a question, I just have, uh, thank you for giving us this information. Because some of what you have given us tonight, back at Avenue E from Broadway, we've been trying to work in that area since two thousand one. We started in two thousand one, we had a lot of conflict. Uh, it needs to be redeveloped in that area, so we, we can get our downtown section on Broadway. As far as the other sections at Riviera Beach, I think, uh, like Old Dixie and Avenue S and some of the others major streets that run through there. Um, CRA can look at those streets and see what can be developed on there to bring people back into the city. You ride around from, uh, Old Dixie to Congress, uh, uh, Avenue S. You will see a lot of homes that are vacant, people are leaving, that they're satisfied. If you go around, uh, Thirty-first Street between Avenue S and Avenue T, bumpy buck road. We were supposed to do that several years ago, nothing happened. Down Avenue T, there was supposed to be sidewalks there, uh, for the kids from Whiting Elementary to walk down, so they would be wanting to walk in the street. They started on it a few years ago, and something happened, the neighbors went in an uproar because of the way it was being done. Uh, first of all, instead of that, some of the sidewalks were right up against the curb of the street. But, some of the neighbors were saying you were coming too far onto their property, and that's where the conflict came. Uh, I'm glad CRA is looking in the hall there, there are a lot of improvements to be done. And I'm glad it was information tonight that it's not gonna be overnight, but something's gonna be done to keep citizens in this town and make more of a comeback, thank you, Jeff.
Any other comments up until this point, seeing as you're, reckon I have to finish your presentation?
Okay, um, just one more, one more project to talk about. And that is, as, if you've been on Broadway, you'll, you'll see that FDOT has done a great job with their new, um, enhancement. And it, actually, it looks very much like this rendering, which was done long before they started. We have our new decorative lighting put in, our new sidewalks, the new landscape median. And, and the one last element that CRA is funding, if you notice, is the overhead wires here, and they are not very nice to look at. Um, you don't notice them every day because they're always there and you're just used to it. But when they disappear, and if you, if you're watching the screen, it really starts to make a, a, a large difference. And, that project will begin this fall and will be finished by next, um, spring. And, uh, all of those overhead, uh, wires, poles will all be put underground, um, so the CRA is funding that project. And, uh, the way it works is, there's a whole bunch of actu- it's not just FPNL, it's AT&amp;T, it's Comcast, it's Fiber Light. Um, a, a, a bunch of different companies, so, if, the deal is, you have to take everyone else off of the pole and bury them before FPL will agree to go in and, and be the last person. So, we've actually already, in the new street construction, as they're building it, we bury everyone else, so we buried Comcast, we buried AT&amp;T, they're all now underground. Um, so, starting in the fall, uh, FPL will come in and put in the underground facilities. And then next spring, they'll be able to take out all those poles so that we go from.
Will the road be torn up again?
No, the, um, FPL will directional bore, so they'll just take one spot, drill down, and then they'll drill underneath the ground, um, to put their facility. That's it, thank you.
Well, Scott, let me ask you something before we jump off, how long have you been with the CRA?
I've been with them since, at least seven years.
Okay, um, I often on Broadway in every place, if we can go back to the median, the new median right there, that's, that's really nice. But I was at the dry cleaners, the barber shop, the TV repair shop, and the bank. And I've been to maybe some, some other businesses just off of Broadway, like Tony Subs or some of these other places. And all of them have the same chief complaint, nobody told us that the roads were gonna be this way. And it's made the accessibility to our business, like, impossible, or next to nothing, like, 'cause you have to go there almost a quarter mile or half mile. And I know that this is not something that the city controls, that the CRA is, you know, this is a DOT project. But, you know, at this point, and I'm not trying to stifle progress or, or see anything. But, I think my barber knows that I'm on the P&amp;Z board, he always asks me this every time I come in, as if I have an update on if they would change. And I don't even wanna start that conversation, 'cause I don't know what, I, I know this has been some time, this has been some years and years in the making, you know, the redevelopment of the Broadway Quarter. But, you know, you know, even when you travel, and let's say we take the trip from City Hall and we travel eastbound going up Blue Heron Boulevard, and we arrive at Broadway, then we decide to travel north on Broadway. Suppose if we wanted to get to Dairy Bell, we would have to drive all the way down to, I think, nearly.
Trail of Mike Donalds.
Thirty-fourth Street, yeah, just about, to make a U-turn, simply because there is a, there is a curb cut around the Save-A-Lot Plaza. But I don't think it's wide enough for you to make a U-turn, and these people are like, you know, they, you know, small businesses are the foundation of, I mean, of America, you know, business. So, you know, when you have these mom and pops who generally, I mean, there are no, there are no corporate conglomerates on Broadway. So, I think, I don't know what it is, and I just kinda wanna share this, some of my thoughts and some of the things that I've noticed. But it's kinda tough to really make a living when you have some of these environmental barriers, because just like, I know this, this really looks nice. The guy was calling me every other week, he's like, man, this construction has really, uh, done a big, uh, hit on my business. But I, I just, I like the idea, but I think it could have been a little more friendly to the businesses and if anybody has any additional. But I, I, I mean, what do you think, is there anything that can be done at this point?
Well, you mentioned the one worst segment, um, which is that if you, if you turn left at, um, Broadway from Blue Heron, if you decide that you wanna go to the other side of the street, you have to drive quiet ways. Uh, and the only solution would be that in the future, we could, uh, get an, another light. So, that would be a new light in between Blue Heron and Silver Beach Road. Uh, if we were able to get a new light, uh, a new intersection, then you could, um, make a U-turn there, so, um, that would be the one possibility we might be able to pursue.
There was a traffic signal, I'm sorry, Chair.
Go ahead, you're.
There was a traffic signal, right at Save-A-Lot Plaza there.
Yes, there was.
So.
So, that might be a, a spot to bring one back, and that would, um, I think, help.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Wiggles?
Uh, several years ago, when they.
Talk into your microphone, so we can hear you.
Uh, right at, uh, Avenue S and Silver Beach Road, we asked for a traffic light up there. And, we were told that the county did a survey up there, and they said it wasn't enough traffic. They have had some terrible wrecks out there. And if you go there anytime between four and six o'clock, trying to get out of, uh, Avenue S to get on either side of Silver Beach Road, it's a nightmare. I wish someone would look into that again, uh, to get something done. I remember one wreck, I brought this up once before, a lady was in a wreck there, first thing I told her, call the city. Get the mobility to traffic lights there. And I don't know what happened, but we really need one.
Silver Beach Road is a county road. And, since it's been requested before, they will go out and, if we request it again, do an analysis and see how many cars are there and measure it against the size of the road, and likely the end result would be that it doesn't warrant a signal. However, if you wanted to pursue getting a signal there, then you would have to go, uh, the political route, um, which would be at the city council saying that they wanted it, and then interfacing directly with the Palm Beach County. Um, so, that's, that's the route that would, you would have to, to follow in order to try and get a light at that spot. And hopefully, if it gets really busy, then it would be warranted by the traffic numbers, and that would be a neat, a simple. But, um, until the traffic numbers support the light, and I'm not saying it's not dangerous and not needed, but until the traffic numbers, you, the city would have to request Palm Beach County, uh, to put one there. So, that would be, uh, how, how would we need to try and achieve that?
Well, this, this moment that, uh, incident came up about, uh, down there by Dunkin' Donuts with that gas leak and all that other stuff went on, and the tech had rerouted. All those people came right down to, uh, Avenue S. I sat on my porch and watched people sit up there for thirty minutes before they could get on, uh, Avenue S. They were about to fight each other, they were blowing horns, that was an emergency. Not one police officer was ever in the wreck that day, it was hot.
I was there, that, if that was like, uh, six weeks ago, I think it was.
Yeah.
I was, I was one of those people waiting in that line.
It was a mess that day. So, that's what I'm saying, something needed to be done by traffic lights there. Thank you.
Ms., uh, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Also, there's, um, current construction plans underway for Silver Beach, so I'll communicate with the city engineer to see what that future improvement in the intersection may be, I can provide that.
Okay, um, did I, someone, Ms. Davis?
I was just curious, um, for the benefit of the smaller businesses, 'cause I've had, heard complaints too about not enough parking. Is there, um, any thoughts about putting, making some on-street parking?
Um.
Along what street, Ms. Davis?
We have, on Broadway, we have the ability, FD, we made FDOT agree, that if we have an entire block that's redeveloping, that they would allow us to add on-street parking, um, 'cause the only way to safely add on-street parking is you can do one, uh, in a whole block. Which the city did in front of their block between Twenty-third and Twenty-second Street. Um, so we have the option to bring, uh, on-street parking in the future, but it would, would only be in the instances where we can redevelop, or a private person wants to redevelop a whole block. Um, so we don't have any, any additional parking, um, planned for, uh, the Broadway Quarter other than that, the Marina District. Um, one, one thing we are doing is, we're, we're trying to add more parking spaces to the Cash America, uh, Dairy Bell parking lot, let me redo that.
Thanks.
Okay, and, are we having any other comments? I just got two. I'm not, Cash America is probably not the business that I would like to see, but I just, I don't know if we got to that point to have them to not have those generators and bicycles on the sidewalk, that's pretty tacky to me, but that's my comment on that. Um, if we can go back one slide to the, uh, right there, maybe, uh, those decorative lighting, I know we did that presentation on signage. I remember seeing some signage on decorative lighting, so if that's possible, if that's even the idea that might work, um, that could probably, it, it may or may not work, because I know there's quite a few businesses on Broadway, and who decides what goes on there. But maybe that's something to kinda, it, it wouldn't eliminate, but at least make directional, when you're looking for a business on Broadway. And, you know, if you look at Broadway now, it's pretty busy, and you got a median which kinda takes up a, a, a good amount of the road, so it's not like you can kinda slow down and, you know, search for your destination. But, maybe that's an idea that's something to think about, to possibly put signage on decorative lighting, like I know we see sometimes during the seasonal. Um, during, during the season, but, you know, if it even helps, because every time that I've seen the clean and safe folks, I was on Broadway. I was actually in the barber shop, and they do a great job. They didn't just come in, they didn't just come in and talk to the business owners. They wanted to know how much did we like it patronizing businesses that was in the Broadway Quarter. And I, I don't go over on the island much, because, um, generally it's just to probably the bank or something like that, but I haven't really, you know, visited many businesses. But, generally, every time that I've been having an encounter with them, has been along Broadway, so I think they're doing a great job. And very pleasing personality, most of the people are very. So I think they're doing a great job and very pleasing personality, most of the people are very pleasant, so I think it's a great idea. So I was a little shocked when you said they pick up paper. Because these folks did not seem like environmental engineers that pick up paper, so, you know, those are my comments.
They're split into two, two crews, so we have clean crew and then safe crew. So the clean, the clean guys, their whole focus is, is to remove litter and trash um from the streets and the areas. And then the ambassador crew, uh, their whole focus is to, to greet visitors, pedestrians, make people feel safe.
What, what are their hours? Like, when do they operate?
I only know the hours at the Marina, they, um, I don't manage that program, but.
Not a big deal, well, okay, I think they're doing a great job and I'm really excited to see all the progress in the CRA. Uh, any other members have any questions or comment of Scott? Okay, well, thank you, Scott, I certainly appreciate it. Oh goodness, thank you, that was really nice. Um, moving along, we don't appear to have any unfinished business. Uh, we'll move down to our new business, the redevelopment of the Cunningham Park.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Scott one more time.
Thank you.
I know previously the board has asked for CRA updates, so I communicated with Scott and he was, he was kind enough to. Offer much more information than I anticipated being offered. Uh, I think overall it was really productive and it shows a lot of progress being made in the city and the CRA. So according to the presentation, I guess, uh, most board members have had enough time to look through the, the documents in front of you. Um, you'll find. Do a couple different site plans, um, a large scale aerial view of Cunningham Park. And as we build, we're like, describing documents for Cunningham Park, the Seddon Park, uh, three point three acres. And it's northwest of Nine Street, southwest of Thirty Street, just east of Washington Elementary School and west of Avenue Harris. Uh, the printout on the map indicates the location of the park. This is Blue Heron Boulevard, Congress, Silver Beach, and the next city. Uh, so this aerial view is also the eleven by seventeen printout that you have in front of you. So you can refer back to it, that's the, the current aerial view that I believe was taken off of Blue Heron. So from this, this view, you can see um what looks to potentially that playground equipment at one time. It's a walled area, there's old bathroom facilities, this, this building that I have a photo of is run down at this point. Um, there is a walking path around the park, but it's just dirt, it's not concrete. Um, there's also basketball courts and currently a tennis court. So I'm gonna run through a couple photos from the park itself, uh, this is the park's current entrance sign. Definitely is updating. Uh, this is a view that shows both the tennis courts, this is looking west across the property. Um, it's just the tennis courts in behind, there are basketball courts. Um, and there's, there's pretty nice landscaping in the park itself. Another view of landscaping and walking path. Might show some of the gazebos that are currently on site. So this is a view opposite of the signage and this is now looking east. Um, turn the basketball courts looking towards tennis courts. Uh, this was the existing structure, I believe function is restroom facility. Those of you that may be more familiar with the park could probably educate me.
It is, but it's never open and it's only open, I think they open it when they have events there. I'm yet to determine that, but I think that's when it's open.
It looked like that was also in need of repair.
I've never been inside.
The park's definitely due for renovations.
You know, if I can just jump back to those slides, you know, my issue with this is this. I kinda grew up in this park, and that building right there, that's not that old. At least that, that, the structure and the, the gazebo and the pavilion is really not that old. I, I wanna say, I wanna venture and say maybe fifteen years old. Yeah, if that long. But, you know, when that first came, I thought, wow, the park was upgraded. But we never used it, it was never open, I think they used, uh, uh, there's an office and it should have been something like. A office and mini little, I guess, a little office for the facility, but it was hardly ever open. And I just hope that when we do move forward, that we utilize it and. Provide for maintenance and upkeep to this facility, because that wasn't a dirt path, actually, it's clay.
It was clay.
And, you know, the money went there initially and then, my gosh, it's like. It was like a sore thumb and it sticks out because there's really nothing and I, I think, I like the idea. And I'm sorry, go ahead and finish and I'll give my. Well, it, it does have a restroom facilities, but there's also a office that's, that door there is a office as well, so.
Yeah, I, I believe the future plans for the building, um, would be to renovate the building, have concessions. Uh, storage space, office space, and also restroom facilities.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, and then, those of you that are more familiar with the park, was, was this once used for playground equipment, I couldn't figure out what else it would be.
It was a playground, it was nice, nice, very nice, it was, the park was nicely done. I, I know they spent a lot of money on it, and the walkway, I know about it because I, I walked there. Uh, we had a walking group and it was really utilized by hundreds of people. I mean, afternoon, that was, I mean, that's what we did, we met there and we had walking clubs, so I don't know what happened, but.
Give it to him.
My pleasure, I'm walking that park, was walking that park in the morning with my wife, every day. She could leave the house walking, and she'd go down Avenue uh T, her baby would come out the house. All of them were walking around that park, it was beautiful. But then the city, where that little office space was, nobody was showing up. Security got pretty rough then. At one time, uh, south of there where that restaurant was. The police department would have someone to patrol that area and stay for three or four hours while the people were walking. Uh, Lieutenant Lockhart, he, I think he was over there then, he'd have a patrolman there. So the people felt safe, those ladies would go there in the morning all day long. Once the police stopped the patrol in there. The ladies stopped going, they called. Easter there, I'm not gonna call that store's name. That was a drug cartel there that was scared the daylight side of it. The city tried their best to shut it down, it never worked. Some of my, all my neighbors would walk down uh Avenue S and the guys would jump in front of them and holler, you wanna buy some drugs. That scared them. And when you scare a man from walking, you know you're gonna scare a woman from walking. So, I, I looked at this plan, it's beautiful. But the first thing we need to do is make sure that somebody gonna be in that office from eight in the morning till the afternoon. To assure the people that are walking there, that there's security in that building, keep an eye on it. Once we get that, that park comes back up, 'cause I'm tired of going to Kelsey Park and I live near the, that's where I go to walk that. You know why I go up there to walk? Because there's a shared car park right on the corner. And you know you're protected. They don't be here, but they leave the car there, so if we leave a car somewhere around there on, on that corner, one of our cars. Those guys on that east side of the street will see that, they're gonna appear. And that park will be booming again, thank you very much.
This is Brooks.
And I, I want you to get through your presentation, really, but the, 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 the thing is. There's a lot of money spent on the park. It worked. They didn't maintain it, I mean, it's like, okay, so. And then they made the pavilion, when everybody was uh accessing and utilizing it. Then the city comes back and then, oh, now you need a permit. And now, it, they made it so difficult for people to use the park that everybody just stopped going. So now, the only, I think, great effort of school utilizes it now or whatever. But, you know, it's, it's a great, it was, it was nice, it would be, it was useful, it was being used. And then, i- it, it's almost like the city, the itself killed the park, really. So, I mean, if you're gonna spend more money on it, I mean, that's great or whatever, but if it's not something that the city, I mean, if you make things so expensive. That nobody in the city can afford, it's not gonna be utilized. And yeah, I'm done.
Okay, um, any other comments?
I just have a question, um, and I don't know if you'll know the answer to this or not. But when you plan a city park, into the budget for the city park, is there public safety? Um, I mean, there must be a budget for parks, do you put in safety, is that calculated in or do you know?
I would anticipate with improvements being done to the park, substantial improvements at that. That the safety element would be coordinated between both the Parks and Rec and Police Department. Being that there would be new investment, having patrol car available, um, having officers available to be on-site for events. Or throughout the day, um, it seemed to be a high priority. I'm not sure if there's a specific lineup in the budget that would cover that, or that would just be more of a, a general fund. For security or maintenance of parks in general, um, but that's something I can follow up with and see what the answer is.
I mean, I think that would be interesting to find out, because, I mean, Miss Brooks is right, I mean, here they already spent a ton of money. And then failed to maintain it, either the safety and the maintenance. And so, like, what's the point, like she said, it, it killed its, the city killed itself. By making this so difficult to, to use and to utilize and the safety issue is probably the main issue.
One more thing, um, just the history, growing up in the city, all the neighborhood parks were built with a little pavilion. They had the, uh, Marilla Heights Park, you had the little building there that, there were park employees that were there. And children in the neighborhood, we went there, I mean, that's what we did at the school in the summertime, you had activities. But there were specific staff that was there, that they provided activities. That was Marilla Heights Park, that was Goodmore Park. And Savinew Park, and I think even the one on, on the south end were the Fourth Street or Fifth Street, whatever. And they worked. I mean, so you go in, I mean, Cunningham, I mean, this, when they did this park, I mean, and we. Goodmore Park was redone only because of the neighbors that were there. It wasn't this city, they didn't wanna do it, we forced them to do it. And forced them to say, you know, you're gonna do this and try to maintain it and we're gonna call if we see, you know, anything going on or whatever. And that's how Goodmore Park, we do an event there every year just to say, walking by the Goodmore Park, cuz it's, I didn't live in that neighborhood, but. Um, but the ma, the, 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 I live there now, but that's what they did, you know, that's what they do. And they make, make them maintain, it, it, it's a well-maintained park. And then you just get one fraction, one incident that, for no one that lives around there. And of course, it gives it a bit of like that or whatever. But, um. And I want you to finish, cuz I'm trying to figure out what this is or whatever, and even with Goodmore Park, I mean, you know, having to rent, it, it's, you know. We're a neighborhood, if we wanna go down there and just, there's my mother-in-law, everybody lives in this little neighborhood that lived there forever. Their children are there, if you go there and you wanna, like, on a holiday or something, just to get together to have a, and, and they do that. Everybody come out and they bring something, you put it on the grill. They gotta pay. I mean, it's crazy, I mean, and it's not cheap, trust me, I rented it, but it's not cheap, so, it's just, but, I mean. And we're on one park, but we're gonna be on other parks, I know, I mean, this, this is just a start, but. And that's it, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Miss, did I hear you, Miss James?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have a question, I just don't see a lot of lighting, um, on the plans. So I was wondering, maybe we have certain hours that, um, the park is gonna close. You know, night events or what the hours were, cuz it just doesn't seem like there's a lot of lighting provided.
Well, before you answer that, Jeff, let me add, cuz I had a, I guess, a response for Miss Davis and then again for. I guess, a, a add-on to what Miss Brooks said, but I actually attended the town hall with Councilman Guiding. His quarterly town hall, at least the last one that he had over at Lindsay Davis, and that's when I first knew about the Cunningham Park redevelopment. And there was a representative from every uh department and also the chief was there. Then the chief did highlight that there were, um, items in the budget. As it related to the development of this park for crime prevention, um, and, what did he say? Septet was crime prevention through environmental design. Uh, so a lot of different measures that they had put in place and there were a lot of residents that expressed some of the same concerns about lighting. And even so much as to the type of surface that the new walking path would be. And because they had people with vandals and dirt bikes and one thing after another and the number of hours. So, you know, um, I'm not sure if Jeff would, would know that, but I know that there was a lot of emphasis placed on this. Project by the chief and how they had worked closely with the, the Parks and Recreation and Design. And he said they had a number of different, you know, surveillance and other measures going in, in place with this park. But he didn't get into the, the real details and he kinda cited that it was, uh, his words were, uh. Proprietary information or something, because he didn't wanna reveal too many trade secrets is what he said. But I, I do trust that when we have a million dollar investment, that there must be some sort of safeguards or some sort of. Measures that we put in place to kind of, you know, maintain and monitor our assets. And that's one of my main concerns. And I certainly like to piggyback off of Miss Brooks and I apologize if we're really deviating from the presentation, Jeff. But, you know, I think it really works, you know, we can't just rely that if, if they build it, they'll come. You know, we have to really put the pressure on our city council, and you know what, I don't even go to our city council. Because I trust that our staff is competent and they usually get it done. You know, I pretty much have at least contacted somebody in every department within the city. That affects my day-to-day living, whether it be the police department or I call over to, not so much human resources. But definitely uh code enforcement issues or public works issues, the utility district issues. I mean, I appreciate all of our members of being on the board, because that shows and demonstrates the passion and commitment that we have for our community. Let's not, and I'm not saying that we are just limiting to the board, I mean, let's. Almost in the sense of Gandhi, be the change that you wanna see, let's call and when we have issues, I don't wanna. You know, I'm not the one to necessarily bring it up at the meeting, I would trust that we have that relationship and we are vigilant enough to say, hey. You know, this seems a little out of order or this is a miss, I'm concerned about this, and put that pressure on them. You know, just like Miss Brooks said, the city residents had to go up and say. We wanna park or we want some amenity on our street, something in our community. Just like I heard Mister Wiggum say, the residents on T Avenue were up norms about the sidewalks or wherever it is. I mean, you know, if they don't know, then they don't know, but again, let's, you know, definitely hold our staff accountable and. You know, I trust that they get it done and if not, then, you know, we have a voice, we elect our, our district representatives. And, you know, by all means, I would certainly encourage us all to participate in that means. I'm sorry, Miss James, you are recognized, I apologize, go ahead.
I was done, my question was just about the, the light.
Um, Jeff, while, while, while she said that and you're driving down your compass, does this come back before us, before site plan? Um, or does that not apply to city-owned property?
I would say technically being that this is a renovation of an existing park, we wouldn't have to come back to planning the zoning board. It's something that could be presented as information once again. Um, I guess what I really wanted to do tonight was get as much feedback as possible from the board in order to provide that to Parks and Rec Department. Um, and other departments, um, so as they're currently working through the plans, they'll be able to really take that into consideration. Um, and other departments, um, so as they're currently working through the plans, they'll be able to really take that into consideration.
Okay, well.
As as the plan is on, it's gonna be presented back to the board as well.
Okay, because I I imagine we're still in the conceptual phase, because I've seen a couple of different renderings here. So is that safe to assume we're still in, and nothing has been necessarily decided?
Yeah, there there's a couple of different versions that I have later on in the presentation that. Shows some of the different, um, options and amendments and plans. I guess to, to ask Ms. James a question on lighting, and I know that there is existing light holes that to be refitted. Typically, however, lighting is shown on the final landscaping plan, um, and to date that has been finalized. But that's something that will be vetted through our police department and I'm sure it'll be reviewed very carefully.
Okay, and I'll mirror one of the comments that I heard at the, at the, uh, town hall meeting. You know, this, this really looks really nice and I would like to see that, and I know that there's some other things that's working outside of. Community development and, I don't know if it's Parks and Recreation, how much they're involved in the actual. Design of it, um, but I know, I I would like to see that, those roads look really nice. And I heard one of the residents say, you can't have a new park with old roads, so I would like to see that, that on-street parking is great, it looks really nice, because. You know, before you you parked on the street and I mean, it wasn't. Off-street parking, it was actually on the street, so that, that looks a lot better than, I like it, I think it's a great idea and I just hope we. We allot as much emphasis and and resources in maintaining it as we are now in the. I guess in the initial redevelopment of the park. Mrs. Brooks.
And I'm just gonna say, I have to say Parks and Rec get it right, the amphitheater that they have at Dan Callaway, I mean. It's good, it's excellent, so, uh, you know, I'm confident, they really do get it right, I mean. The way it's maintained and what they have all that, I mean, it's great, so I I I, you know. My, like I said one time, they need to put them on the streets and maintain the streets and stuff. Because they really do a very, very good job of maintaining, um, the facilities and. Grass and, you know, everything, it's it's awesome, so, I mean, so maybe this is. Off to a new start and will be great, so, it looks like it will be.
Any other member, Jeff, you recognize to continue?
Okay, just a few more slides, I think this is the last photo and we're back to the aerial. So from from the aerial again, you can see there's apparently no on-street parking to the north or south of the site. As we go through, there's a couple of different plans that have been provided, this is actually. The most recent plan, um, within the packet that was emailed out. Had the preliminary conceptual plan, which was basically every desire and want that Parks and Rec had. Um, that has been somewhat scaled back, uh, for example, previously, uh, an amphitheater was proposed here. Uh, now it's just a pad that can be used, um, for really multipurpose uses, um, so there won't be a set amphitheater. And they're envisioning having this be a multipurpose field for soccer, flight football, and just recreational activities. Uh, there are some components though that they transfer over, um, basically, um, in their entirety. There's a splash pad proposed towards the center of the site. Um, there are walkways that run throughout the entire site around the perimeter and also within the interior of the site as well. Uh, this will be the refurbished restroom concession stand and storing unit. Throughout the side, there will also be pavilions. And the current proposal is to have two new basketball courts. And also a brand-new entrance feature that there is an additional eleven by seventeen, which is this.
Oh, I wonder what that was.
Illustration that was printed out, um, so that has more of a prominent entrance feature along Avenue S. So that would correspond to to this entrance feature here.
So does that mean, that mean that they're eliminating the tennis court?
Uh, the current proposal does eliminate tennis court. So I was anticipating feedback from the board on that item.
Keep the tennis court.
Chair.
This is Brooks.
I've never seen anyone playing tennis, even when I was walking, basketball courts, I've seen being utilized, I have to say that. They do utilize that a lot, but I I have to say, I've never seen anyone playing tennis on that, on that, um. I don't recall, and my park is great too, my park, cause my park is great, so they do maintain it, it's very good, so.
Ms. Brooks, I actually had the opportunity of growing up and seeing the Williams sisters come to Avenue West and play tennis.
You did, I never seen them.
Yes, I remember specifically when they came in, Mrs. uh, James.
I would say keep the tennis court, um, maybe in the past, but with. Our youth today and coming up, we're trying to get them to do different things. Especially in in our community, but this is a, a, a black community, we don't just want basketball courts out there. We want something else that the the kids could do, and I think if it's there, then it would be utilized.
I, um, I like the idea of tennis, I actually played tennis, um, when I have an opportunity. But just the placement of the tennis court, I don't think would work very well, well, at least on the first plan, would work very well, because. If you know tennis courts, they usually have a windscreen, uh, and that would take away from the visual appearance of. You know, if you have a, what is it, maybe a twelve-foot gate and you have what appears to be almost. Uh, almost something that's kind of blocking the view of this beautiful landscape. If it was to go, I would probably recommend it be towards the, I guess, the west end of the park. As compared to along Avenue West, I mean, I personally would like to have it back, but if. If not, then, you know, I certainly would wanna, you know, along Avenue West.
Would, um, what I would recommend as we, as we go through and there's gonna be other discussion points that. You know, each board member will have their own opinion on it, um, it may be beneficial just to have separate motions on each item. So if, for example, someone wants to make a motion to either have or not have tennis courts. Um, that's something that a motion can be made in seconded, that way it can be on the record. Um, again, there'll there'll probably be mixed, um, mixed opinions, mixed motions for multiple items as we move forward, but. That would be a, a potentially clean way of having board direction on individual items.
Excuse me, I wonder if we do have include tennis courts?
Just hold on just a moment for me, Mr. Hamilton, cause I wanna make sure that we, uh, and and you'll certainly be recognized for the motion. But. You know, I guess. It it probably would have been more proper that we had the actual designers and understanding why it was removed. You know, so we can have a better conceptual idea, but me just looking at it, I mean, if you, I know we, they just redone the. Tennis courts over here at Wells Recreation, and if you're standing on the east side, which is Avenue H and you. Tried to look through at the tennis court, you can't see what's going on on the, exactly behind it, so, I guess. My concern would be that, and that would be my first guess on why it was removed, because the windscreen's sort of. They're not transparent and they're designed as like a green, yeah, like a green mesh and. You know, you wouldn't necessarily be able to see through it and it's not, you know, transparent, so that would be my guess and I would have wished we'd have had.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, there's a motion for, um, you need to. Board needs to address, you need a motion regarding tennis courts, so either you can vote on it or. You can vote to continue the discussions, but you need to address the motion.
Okay. Well, I I guess, yeah, he made the motion, but if the floor wasn't open for the motion, because I guess. Jeff gave us his recommendation of what he would have liked to have, and before I could even, you know, make any further. Comment or even acknowledge he stated the motion, so is that in order?
You can ask him if if you withdraw the motion to further discussion, like the way that they disposed of it.
Okay, did you choose to, uh, withdraw Mr. Hamilton just for the time sake, just for time being?
Will do.
And no, and that's what my, uh, concerns are with the tennis court, and I think it would work better. I I guess we have it here now, so we need to make our recommendations since we're gonna take it up now, but. Knowing what the intentions was and the different, different plans would probably make for better discussion and, you know. Will probably eliminate the need of having to make some of these motions, so those are my comments, if there are any other comments.
I have one more comment, Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. James.
Um, what is the feedback of the the residents in that that area? Do we have any of that, I mean, did the the residents, did they come to the table, did they provide input? Uh, in what they would like to see at their park? Do we have any of that from the, from the residents?
I believe community meetings were held, I was not a part of that one.
So, could we get that information if it was, uh, provided from the residents, just so we have, um. Knowledge of what they requested they would like to have?
I can see if meeting minutes are available.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. James, just just more, I know I heard Mr. uh, Mr. Wickham, go ahead, Mr. Wickham, you're recognized.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, when I first received the notice that we were gonna have this in our general meeting, in our general meeting. I told all the neighbors about it. I thought they would be there, I don't know whether it was the weather or what, but they had a meeting at Nanda Davis. When this first started out, that neighbors know about this, they all didn't know what's going on. But I wanted them here tonight so that they could look at some of the, uh, improvements that are being, gonna be made here. For example, you look at the parking, they got where it's parking is going into the park now, that mean it's. Gonna take somebody out of way, because right now, where it's lined up, you can't park there. The only parking that we really have is at Washington Elementary. Now, if you having a picnic there, a, a, a neighborhood gathering. You have to park over there in, uh, Washington Elementary, and you know you can't park over there during the school hours. So that's why I'm glad that we have this parking right here. I just wish it was more of it, because I think I counted about thirty-five parking spaces. And we're gonna need, uh, uh, you know, some more if we could get them in there, but if not. Then we'll have to communicate with, uh, Washington Elementary. To ask them, could we use their parking, uh, facilities? You know, back on Saturday or Sunday or after-school hours, or something like that, you know. Uh, my neighbors are excited about this, all of us teenage citizens are ready to go walking. We are ready, and we want this to get started immediately. We want the recreation department to have someone there from eight o'clock in the morning on up till. We want the police department, if they don't have a diva car somewhere around there, that'll keep them guys off the east side. From hanging around there, we'll, we could walk from our home, you know that, we don't have to drive. I live on thirty-sixth street and this is on thirty, I would walk down Avenue T, walk the park. When I leave, I walk down Avenue S, but right now, you can't get me to walk down Avenue S. With all them hooligans sitting out there across the street on the east side. But once the police department and the recreation department get together to get it convenient for us to be there. From eight o'clock in the morning on up till the evening, I think this would be a wonderful asset to our section. Whatever y'all wanna do, I'm ready to approve it, I'm ready to go get it, I like what I'm looking at, I just want. You know, planning the zone, you know, administrative, to jot down some things that we suggest. That could get a wholesale group of people in there. The city people that used to run some city councils, if they had their reelection, uh, activity there. Now, you can't get them to have anything over there, you know where they go, that Rock Street. All of them, the males, the city council, they used to have, uh, fundraising and everything else in that park. But not now, and once we get this set up like it is now, I guarantee you they'll be back over there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. James, you're recognized.
Is it, um, is it feasible to make a condition of approval, maybe that there is a police presence? Um, and also parks are rec, keep, keep the park open?
The recommendation can be made and the city council will have to.
Approve, I understand.
Provide any, any condition of approval, um.
But when it goes before city council, then you would say to them, I mean, you would be making the presentation that. We approve this with conditions, right, is that what you would, right?
Information and director from the board can be provided within the agenda item summary that it does provide to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
That's that's basically the way the information would be transferred to council.
Mr. Gatlin, why would this need to go before city council, is that it been funded, um? What, at what, I guess, why would it need to go before city council? Cause it's not a site plan application?
Technically, maybe it wouldn't have to, however, being it is a large community project, there has been a lot of stakeholder meetings and and buy-in. Um, I think it's something that, once again. Individuals would like to provide a final opportunity for the public to be able to comment on the plans. And, you know, honestly, being that it is a positive improvement, it's probably something that should be showcased to the city council.
Well, it should be, and that's what, well, I guess what my questions are, are we making recommendations to? The development team or to city council, because, you know, are we make? Like, for instance, I know Mr. Hamilton just made the motion of we wanna keep the tennis court, that doesn't seem like that's a decision typically that the city council would make.
Right, the the recommendation can be directed towards development team or it could be towards city council. So if there are aspects of the current plan that the planning zoning board feels should be amended. Prior to going to city council, such as the tennis court item, um, that recommendation would be provided to the development team. Um, and when it finally goes to city council, whether or not the planning zoning board were, was for or against a particular item can be presented as well. And either development team will, uh, be able to take that into consideration, um, you know, see what the budgetary constraints there are. And try and try and work with what they have.
Well, if I can ask, when we make, I guess, project, I I mean, specifications and. That sort of modifications or suggestions to the project, can we have it returned to us similar to what we've done in? I know most recently the seven eleven special exception application, we made our. Motion about some concerns or our recommendations and they returned a response. If they were able to do it and if not, because of this reason or that reason or something like that, and then, you know. Can we have something back, because I know, I'm I'm curious why, and I just noticed that the date on this says twenty twelve. So I'm just curious how we got to, from twenty twelve up to this point, so what considerations were made, I mean. You know, Mr. Hamilton, we unanimously approved a recommendation and say, let's add the tennis court back in. And then I wanna see why the development team thought it was, you know, prudent to take it out altogether, so that's, I guess. What I would like to see happening, I mean, is that kind of possible, I mean, even though. Again, we're not making a recommendation per se, because this is just for information, correct, this is just for?
Technically, it's for informational purposes, whoever I was, was anticipating board making. Motion or recommendation overall, but it doesn't have to occur.
It doesn't have to occur, right, okay, alright, so the response with that?
If if there are questions of the design team that the board has, um, I don't see a reason why they would be able to create a response.
Okay.
Bring it back to the board.
Even though they choose to go. Even though they choose to go on in a different route, they can, can at least provide some justification?
Right, and, and there could be other factors on there and as well that, um, we all might not be privy to, so
Right.
provide additional information.
Okay, um, I think that's reasonable if that's, okay. Any other concerns or comments, and I'll allow Mister Hamilton to make, well, he'll have the floor to make a motion if he so chooses. Mister Hamilton, you're recognized if you still have that motion.
So?
No, make the motion, Mister Hamilton.
That tennis court remain on the second.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Got second.
It's been moved by Hamilton, second by Mister Wiggum.
Article Hamilton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yeah.
Ari Davis?
Yes.
Renee James?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
No.
Frederick McCollum?
Yes.
Members, any other concerns related to the park or recommendations that we choose to make to either the development team or city council?
Chair.
Mrs. James.
It's not a recommendation, just a question about, um, the lighting. How much lighting will be provided?
Okay, I guess if that's gonna be on the response, and is that something that the development team can?
Yeah, it's, again, it's always cleanest to have a motion, so if the request from the board was to ask for additional information associated with future lighting, um, in conjunction with safety concerns, in conjunction with hours of operation, always a cleanest way to do it is to make a motion.
Chair.
You're recognized.
I want to make a motion that we request through the development board to find out about the lighting in future, our future lighting requirements, our plans for Coleman Park. Sorry, Cunningham Park.
It's been moved by Mrs. James.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mrs. Davis. Hearing no other concerns, will you call the role on the question of lighting?
Article Hamilton?
Yes.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Ari Davis?
Yes.
Renee James?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Frederick McCollum?
Yes.
Nicholas Bolden?
Members, any other concerns related to the Cunningham project, Cunningham Park project?
I just have a comment.
Mrs. Davis.
You know, we've taken a great deal of time on this, and, um, and we still don't have the answers that we'd like to have. I'm just wondering if it would be maybe more efficient for us to have the design team for whichever projects we have that we're observed or reviewing. I mean, this is Chris Wayne and Associates, would it, would expedite matters if we had them make the presentations, since they're the ones who probably worked with the neighbors, or how does that mean?
I don't see why they would be able to attend, you know, planning and zoning board meeting, uh, to be available to answer questions. I'll be contacting them directly as far as answering the board's current concerns with the lighting, and also discussion on the tennis courts. So, I, I don't foresee that being an issue at all for them to attend.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Who does the design or development team or? Who, who do they work with? Do they work with Parks and Recreation, or do they work with Community Development, or is it a combination of all?
Um, I believe that it was through Parks and Rec and also Recreation.
The purchasing, but, you know, so Community Development didn't have any involvement in this, because, you know, it would appear to sound like, I mean, just in a phase, Community Development would be involved in development or any kind of improvements or rehab or remodeling of a park, especially just to make sure that, you know, some of the things or, or amenities that's going in are consistent with, with, you know, um, other, you know, neighboring, neighboring things, so, is that?
I don't disagree.
Okay, well, I would like to see, you know what, uh, that, that, that doesn't work for me, because who, who makes the present, who, who would even ultimately present this to the council? I mean, even if it's for a presentation, I don't think, I don't wanna say nobody's not qualified, but I, I would like to see that we rely on our experts for what it is that they do. And I would hope that there's some involvement of Community Development, because, you know, we've asked questions regarding, you know, the way some things work, and I know Public Works should be involved with the road paving, but, you know, we need, um, I think it should work better. Go ahead, Mister Wiggum.
Uh, well, our comments about, uh, police department becoming involved in this and city recreation, uh, department becoming involved in this, of seeing that someone is there doing certain open hours, police department to get involved to see that a officer, they don't have to be there eight hours a shift, just partially like they used to do. Uh, Lieutenant Lockhart used to have officers just park, that's about three hours. He clears everything out. You know, I, I would like to see the police involved, I would like to see the city have someone there at all times while it's open during the day. You don't have to be there at night just during the day. That, those are my comments.
Okay. I think it's been noted, um, I, I just don't know where we go from here, because it's a lot. It's a lot.
And, and this is a unique project as well, because it's not being presented to you necessarily in the final form. So it's still early enough where discussion and input can be backed into the plans, in comparison to some of the other site plans or special exception approvals that have already been vetted for a lot of departments, and there's honestly less, less room for input. So this was an opportunity kind of showing plans as they have been developed. Still early enough to account for, for public comments, planning and zoning board comments. So we can, um, take all the additional feedback from the board, whether that's through official motions or just through the meeting minutes from tonight's meeting, and provide that to the development, to Parks and Rec Department, and, once again, provide the, the final plans and planning and zoning board for a year.
And I don't wanna continue to rehash the same thing, but I'm gonna just add these last couple things. Is there a timeline on, on, on this, as far as, you know, windows?
The, the timeline that I was aware of is, it's been, uh, can't think the right word.
Change.
Change is, is a good word, not the right word.
Two years.
The previous projected timeline is no longer gonna be adequate for the project, so, what they thought was gonna be happening is not gonna happen. So it's gonna take more time.
Well, um, I would like to see that there's more public meetings, and more so than that, I would like to see when, and, and, and this is a hint for my members, because I can't make a motion, but I would like to see for, for the, for the sake of when we have these kind of improvements and changes to public right-of-ways or parks, anything like that, that we require that they follow the same process, or our recommendation is that they follow the same process as a site plan application, because if you remember, we just took on site plan applications for Atkins and as well as for Seven-Eleven. We had comments and feedback from every department that was involved in that project, so at least when the city spends our, spends the taxpayer dollars, then we should be just as much accountable to our taxpayers when we're using city, city funds investing in city, in city property, just as much as when we use a private developer or a business that wished to expand, so we should use the same due diligence and seeking feedback from all departments, as well as having everyone to comment, or if they don't have a comment or any feedback, then I would like to see that, because, you know, this is like hit or miss, we don't even have all the information here, you know, and it's been referenced, uh, police department and community development and public works and parks and rec, so we need all the information, and I would like to see if that's something that we can do. So, here, you're, you're recognized, Miss Davis.
So are you, um, are you suggesting that we defer the project?
No, we, we, I don't think we have the actual power to defer, because this just came to us for information. But I think we should make a recommendation to the council that when we take on projects, just for information, that we have the same full presentation as if we were approving a site plan application, because, you know, I think it's just only fair and proper, because we follow that same precedent and that same procedure for businesses that come in, we should at least have that process for city projects. So, if there isn't anything additional on the project per se, then let's move on on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, did we finish the presentation, Jeff? Or can we just call it finished since? Cause this, okay, finished. Alright, no board comments, general discussion.
Got a couple little things.
No public comments, no correspondence, Miss Davis, you're recognized for planning and zoning board comments.
The, um, the city, the new city hall and so forth that's being constructed, or what, what's the status of the new facility? Do you know?
Um, I believe the, there is an existing tenant in the facility on Fifteenth Street. Uh, I don't recall the exact date that they'll be out of the facility, but at that point in time, the current plan is to start moving city functions to that location. Not all city functions, but some.
And then, does the project come before city, uh, before planning and zoning?
No, it was already proposed by city council. That was about two years ago, I think.
Is it, is it supposed to come to planning and zoning first? I mean, it's a done deal, I'm just curious.
If there's a question to answer, I don't, I don't have it.
It's the first, it's pay grade.
I'm sorry, Miss Davis, you said city hall?
Not, not city hall, the, the new complex that they were working on.
I, I heard you say city hall, so, uh, I was thinking, okay, I know about the, is it public safety complex?
Public safety.
Okay, I thought I missed something, okay.
Okay.
Um, this is our portion where we make our comments, any other members choosing to comment?
Chair.
Mrs. James.
It's just a reminder that, um, all city property owners should have received their true notice by now from the property president's office. Just be aware you have a deadline coming up next week, September fifteenth, if you don't agree with your property tax assessment, to file a petition with value adjustment board. And to also be aware that, um, twenty-fourteen tax bills will be coming out on or around the first week of November. So the early, earlier you pay, the greater discount. So payments in November receive a four percent. Those are my comments.
Thank you, thank you for that. Uh, any other members?
Oh, another comment, I'm sorry.
You're recognized, Miss James.
Um, also for city residents, I don't know if you guys are aware of the, the rollback registration fees that went into effect September first. So if you have a vehicle, um, that needs to be renewed, you're gonna see some, some savings, maybe like twenty-five to thirty bucks for your vehicle registration, based on those rollback fees from two thousand nine.
Thank you. Mrs. Davis, I heard you, what comment?
The, I know we probably have some real important upcoming projects. Could you provide us some detail or let us know what's happening? What do you have in the, what do you have pending that, um, like, for the last six months? I mean, what, what building applications have been made, what's, anything with the coastal construction or the Amrit and all of those sorts?
What Seth has is, um, basically a current task list that has, um, project information, so I can provide that to the board.
Could you do that on an ongoing basis, so we can, for, keep up?
Uh, to the best of my abilities, yes, and then remind me if I miss a week or two.
Alright, thanks.
Um, I, I, I was trying to, on one thing, couple things. We haven't met since, uh, July, I believe, and I was, did look at the minutes and I did make note, have we gotten any updates on, I know we asked about the timeline for the language change for the CRA. Were we able to make any kind of headway with that? Okay, um, how about, uh, the, the minutes and so forth? The audio minutes, like, it, it, it's almost like, uh, it, it, it's kinda tough, Jeff, and I'll explain to you why. We met in July, and I was really hoping that we would have gotten something like a meeting in August, but it didn't happen, so, you know, it's, it wasn't anything for us to take up, so I understand that, but is it possible that, and I don't wanna constrain you guys, I'm not gonna say we need to have the minutes tomorrow, but at least soon after the meeting, even though there's not an agenda, or have the audio recording available online, because I don't, I didn't really have a lot of time to really, cause I knew it wasn't a, much on here, but at least have the audio recording available soon after. As, as, as opposed to waiting to the next meeting, cause here it is, we've been away from here for nearly, what, seven weeks? So, um, yeah, if we could possibly do that, that'd be great, and
It's about, if the audio recording, um, that's typically much easier to post, we post it on YouTube currently. Um, so that's much easier to get done versus trying to transcribe the meeting minutes, so
Well.
my goal is to post at least the week.
Who transcribed the minutes?
Uh, Mister Mario, the last of us.
Do we s- We, you introduced us, I believe, in July to another staff person, is he still with us?
Yes, uh, that is our principal planner, John Graves Bradley.
Okay, can we make a motion to ask staff to have our minutes transcribed by whoever the folks is that does it for them, so you guys aren't burdened, would you like that?
It's been discussed before, previously with the funding issue, um, I wouldn't mind it.
I second the motion.
Well, I can't make the motion, but I, I, I would just, I guess it's the funding of someone actually having to
Court reporter.
Both the city council and city board have a court reporter.
Well, is the court reporter actually at the meeting, or do they go by the audio recording?
It's a good question, because when I attend the city council meetings, I don't, it's not the city court reporter. So I don't know if they do a mix of, of video recording, I'm not exactly sure what the process is.
I guess that's almost like making a motion to have it on channel eighteen, but, you know, that's neither here nor there, so it's just our recommendations, but at least I would have thought there should have been some sort of report back on the land use regulations, and I, uh, made some comments at our, let me see, I made comments in June at the, um, oh my goodness, I believe it was the CRA board, and then again, when the site plan application came back up at Seven-Eleven, I didn't actually comment on the item, but I, public, the public comments portion, I said something at the city council meeting when the, it came up for final approval, and one of the things that I said was this process is not transparent, or is it fluid, because here it is, we've been held out, you know, we make a recommendation, whether it be a funding issue, why we don't get a response back, or a timing issue, or whatever, but quite honestly, two months, I think, should be ample enough time for someone to give us an update on how the language changed, or anything like that, so my recommendation is let's do it again, and if there's a member that chooses to do that, that'd be great. But if not, I certainly understand it, but it just seems a little fruitful that when you part of a board and you have reasonable expectations, that when you operate in good faith and we do things that, you know, we make recommendations, we would like to see that is carried through, you know, our advice or our intentions are actually made or is delivered to the actual board, then we would hope that's the case, but you know, that's not always true, so if not, then there's no pressure. Mister Gagman, you're recognized for updates.
Um, for the updates, I'll be sure to email out the, um, current project list to the board. I'll try to do that on a regular basis, I'll be able to include that as part of the P and T packet, something along those lines, so that way the board will have it prior to the meeting. something along those lines, so that way the board will have it prior to the meeting. Previously, I had reminded a few board members that their terms are coming up and I have not received feedback from the board members, if they would like to continue volunteer on things and work, so that's second one, funding one.
Do you have, uh, is there a list? Do you have the list there?
I think I got one, yeah.
Yeah, I believe it was Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Wiggum, and wasn't it Miss Davis as well?
I'll be happy to serve again.
Actually, let me ask you something, how does that work? Do we need to reapply?
No, you do not need to reapply, I just need something in writing to be simply an email, but what needs to happen is after, prepare a agenda item for city council for renominations to the board.
Okay, that's, yeah, I think it, it's December for you guys.
Alright.
Okay, um, is that all, you got upcoming meetings?
Just a question, I think I asked last month about the, um, I think that you were gonna get, or at least I asked for a report on the change of the land use regulations? On how they got changed or why, and how they got changed or why?
Right, I believe that's what the chairperson was speaking about before.
Are we gonna, so what are we doing?
Um, to be frank, but I haven't been, um, provided a directive to move forward with that, I know that there has been separate work done. I believe the city manager has asked for, um, work to be done in regards to that. So I was hoping that once that was finalized, that it should be provided to the planning and zoning board as well.
When do you think that'll be, any idea?
I, I really don't wanna try to come up with a date.
Only like three months or six or year.
See, I, I don't know.
You said you haven't received a directive, now, you mean directive from the board or directive from, I guess, the powers that be?
Uh, from a direct supervisor or above the direct supervisor.
Oh, okay, on your head, okay. That's interesting. Okay. Any other members before we adjourn? Hearing no other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Ms. James? How much you get paid to do that public service announcement for your job?
I just like keep the people informed. But I don't want you calling me, baby, saying, honey, no.
Uh, we don't call, those are not the call, you're not getting those calls from us.